Good evening. My name is Harold Lox. I am a resident of District 200. Later this evening, the Board will be discussing bond and interest fund abatement. There's approximately $3.5 million sitting in this fund. How did the money get into the fund in the first place? Over the past 20 years, the district has issued bonds for various school and projects. Every year, the district levies from the taxpayers, bond and interest payments through their two-page tax collector. The tax collector then adds a 1% surcharge on a levy. The surcharge provides the district with enough funds to make its debt and interest obligations for those who don't pay their property taxes. Over the year, the 1% surcharge plus interest has grown to $3.5 million. The Board is going to discuss what they're going to do with this excess funds. First of all, the funds belong to the taxpayers, not the school district. The county levied the extra tax, not the school district. So it needs to be returned back to the taxpayers. Recently, there has been discussion that the district is now thinking about keeping the $3.5 million to themselves. During one of the recent finance meetings, both Board members agreed that these funds should be abated back to the taxpayers, and I agree with both of them. I hope the rest of the Board agrees with us. This year, my school taxes went up $125 and $750 for the rest of my tax bodies. The taxpayers could use some tax relief in this era of high inflation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Halen.
My name is Tom Halen. I'm a resident of District 200. It's me again. I've been here since June. I've been coming to every school board meeting. I have yet to have the Department of Education, the school board in front of me, address my concern. So usually, I put a lot of thoughts together, and I write out a speech, and I come down here, and I spend a lot of my time, right, trying to speak with you about my concerns. And that doesn't seem to do any good. So tonight, I'm just going to wing it, right? I'm here for myself, right, my property. There's a very loud noise that is illegally emitting sound from Wheaton Warrenville South High School. You've all heard this before, onto my property, right? So this is causing a lot of issues. I'm going to stick to the main issues, right? My wife is going through IVF treatment right now, cannot sleep. While she's undergoing, trying, supposed to be incubating and being as healthy as she can, cannot sleep. We're on round four. Maybe that's got something to do with it. Maybe she can't sleep with this noise outside, which is the culprit. Cannot conceive with IVF, with donor eggs, which means you're 80% going to make it, all right? Four rounds. Can't sleep because you can't sleep with the friggin' air handler going on, all right? This is serious. My next-door neighbor, his wife, end of life, extremely advanced Alzheimer's. When that unit kicks on, she freaks out. She doesn't know what's happening. They're running around the house. He has in-home caregivers. They're running around the house, trying to shut the windows, trying to calm her down, right? You're stressing this woman out. Are you reducing the length of her life? More than likely, right? Are you reducing the ability for me and my family to conceive due to this? More than likely, right? Is the sound being admitted illegal? Yes, it is, right? But I get lied to my face. No one wants to admit what has happened, and none of it. Nobody wants anything to do with it. Maybe this guy will shut up and go away, right? Never going to go away. You've reduced my property value, right? So even if I wanted to sell and leave my home, my home that I pay taxes on, that I give to you so you can then turn around and oppress me, okay? And that's what it is. You look up the definition of oppress. That's what it is. So since I'm limited on time here, we're going to do this.
6:45 a.m. This is the noise.
This is my wife. This is all day long. It runs four days straight, Thursday through Sunday, right? You guys are talking about wanting money, yet we're running an air handler four days. Nobody's in the school. We're running this gigantic air handler four days straight, right?
Thanks, Mr. Halen.
No, this is what this noise is.
We reached our time limit, Mr. Halen.
I don't have the power.
Yes, sir. Sir, we've reached our time limit. I appreciate your time and your comments. Thank you. All right. Dr. Schuler, we just read the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler, do you have any topics to report to the Board?
I do. A couple of things that I wanted to share with the Board tonight. Number one, in your green folders tonight, there is a copy of a Fine and Performing Arts Arts Calendar. Just wanted to mention that we make that Fine and Performing Arts Calendar available every year to our community. So both of our high schools, we have a variety of activities in the arts, choir, band, plays, drama opportunities. We actually started a number of years back producing this calendar and sharing it with a number of our different, uh, community partners, some of our, our, our facilities within the, the district to, to make sure that we welcome them to see some of the amazing arts that are, that are in place. So one, I just wanted to share with the board, I'd encourage you to certainly share it with anybody in the community you think you might be interested. Erica and her team certainly distribute that widely across the district. Number two, just wanted to mention or share with the board that we are scheduled at your October committee of the whole to bring back some initial feedback around the community engagement process that is currently taking place. There's a survey that's coming out. It's a survey similar to what has been a part of the, the process, both the virtual and the in-person opportunity, as well as version of the survey that's gone out via phone, um, that's going to go out broadly within the, the community, so wanted to continue to, to mention that. Number three, I just wanted to mention that one of your partners within the, the district, the Student Excellence Foundation, has a big event coming up on November the fourth, Swing for Excellence. That's one of their main fundraising, uh, events that they do at Topgolf, so I wanted to make mention of that, both for the board and, and community that, uh, happened to be at, uh, a meeting out in the community where they were presenting this week, uh, the work that the Student Excellence Foundation is doing, amazing work, both to make sure that they are handling food insecurity in the community as well as education enhancement opportunities in the community, so I want to continue to support them. I wanted to mention that actually in the Illinois State Board of Education Weekly Update that came out today, there's an article, um, down toward the, the bottom of their update that actually highlights from this last school year, um, any high school districts or high schools, uh, schools that have high schools, um, that, uh, actually gave students what are called college and career pathway endorsements. So nineteen, the right nineteen students that actually got that, uh, pathway endorsement on their transcript, uh, some of the other opportunities that we've been talking about in terms of building out some future, um, pathway pieces, I think we'll continue to expand those opportunities and some of the other pathways in, uh, years to, to come. I think, um, there were only thirty-nine school district across, uh, school districts across the state that actually issued, um, those college career endorsements, uh, pathway endorsements last year, so I'm certainly pleased to be a part of that. Finally, I want to mention, uh, that October the twentieth, Friday, October the twentieth, is Principal Appreciation Day in Illinois, so, um, we are sure thankful you had an opportunity to hear from Mrs. Bailey tonight, does an incredible job here at Sandberg, but, um, we are so thankful for, uh, our leaders within the district, our principals that, uh, in turn support, uh, our teachers and our staff that do an amazing job of providing the experience for our students. Uh, the, the system would not work, um, certainly without, uh, that level of leadership, so I thank them for that. Um, and then just finally, I want to mention, uh, that I'm going to have an opportunity this weekend, um, to actually share some of the work that happened over the summer in the redevelopment of two of our Library Learning Center, uh, projects. That's the work at Johnson, the work at Whittier, um, that happened, uh, both in, in a combination of some district funds, um, developer donation funds and a state grant, um, that allowed us to approach that work. We're going to actually, uh, present that work, uh, actually at a, at a learning spaces, some in our conference, uh, that, um, I'm excited to highlight some of that opportunity as well as some of the research that, uh, we've been working on to look at use of that space and how it's impacting especially our portrait of a graduate and some of the key attributes that, um, we're seeking to develop. So, um, just a few updates for you. Any questions?
Board, any questions? All right, moving on to our consent agenda, um, let me read the items currently on the consent agenda. As a reminder, we moved item five to an action already. Uh, items included in the consent agenda are approval of statements of completion from the Regional Office of Education for Longfellow Elementary, Sandberg Elementary, and Wheaton Warrenville South High School, approval of professional learning expenditure requests for board members, approval of bill, pay, bills payable and payroll, and approval of minutes for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, open and closed, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, special, uh, meeting with ISBE, open and closed, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, Committee of the Whole, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to May twenty-second as allowable by law. Board members, are there any items that you'd like removed from this consent, consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Dr. Schuler, any information, additional information?
No additional information.
All right, board members, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. Can I just make one quick comment? Um, I just wanted to point out, uh, Finance Committee was, uh, a part of this discussion, so, uh, on the bills payable list, um, for this month, we did make some changes to that bills payable list, so at the front end of that list now, um, you will see a description of account code and what that account code means, both in terms of location and the expenditure, um, and we added that to the bills payable, uh, list. That was some, some feedback from the community, making sure we can point out exactly where expenditures are taking place, so that is on your bills, bills payable list, meant to mention that.
Thank you. So board, I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kolevitz?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson, Ms. Kole, uh, Ms. Kolevitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Our next action is the Policy Posting Consent Agenda. There's one policy on the posting agenda, approval to post revised policy four dot one five two capital renewal funding Sherman Durges methodology for public review and comment. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
Yeah, um, just a little bit of background and, and certainly Facilities Committee, um, feel free to, uh, can weigh, weigh into this. This is actually, uh, this revised policy's actually been through a couple of committees, um, within the, the board. The conversation started out of the Facilities Committee, actually it started way back out of the Finance Committee, um, as we were exploring a question on, should the future of Sherman Durges have some escalator built into it, right? Some, some type of, uh, escalator over time, uh, and so, um, we spent some time, uh, exploring that with both Finance, Facilities Committee. I think the Facility Committee, um, felt as though that policy, it, it initially went into play really primarily as an accountability policy to make sure that, uh, we achieved an objective set, uh, by the board at the time, um, but as we arrived at that place where we've now, uh, hit and delivered, uh, on that accountability target, um, that we did need to add some language and description to bring greater clarity around what Sherman Durges is, how it's used, uh, to project, uh, needs and opportunities, um, certainly that, uh, we will do a three-year look ahead always, uh, at, uh, high priority, uh, needs within the, the district, and, and so, uh, so what, what you see is some additional language that was worked, uh, with the, uh, Facilities Committee and then went back to the HR Policy Committee to review before it's in front of you. So, uh, Brad, John, anything you want to add from Facilities?
Yeah, I'll add a little bit. So Dr. Schuler touched on the third paragraph, which is the objective to have a kind of a rolling three-year look at our projected capital needs. The second paragraph, excuse me, second paragraph really talks about the, the need to maintain and increase when possible, uh, budget allocations. We talked a little bit about whether we could allocate a percentage to that, excuse me. We thought that was be, would be a little bit difficult to do because we still need to fit within kind of the consistency of Board Policy four point one oh, which is fiscal and budget management. So we think, though, the combination of those two statements really gives the board the latitude, but also recognizes that we have to continue to ramp up when possible. And then the, the final paragraph really talks about the, kind of considering the opportunity to, um, benefit, uh, learning environments beyond just kind of the capital infrastructure and think about, uh, opportunities to, you know, kind of modernize spaces to reflect modern learning environments, modern learning environments, but also in support of the portrait of a graduate and the district's strategic plan. So it's a much more comprehensive, I think, uh, forward-looking kind of lens at what that policy is versus where it started.
Board members, any questions or comments? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the Policy Posting Consent Agenda as presented.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Chronic fill, uh, option, and so that, the, the new version of the form, uh, is now live. That actual form itself, uh, didn't appear in policy, only a reference to it, so we did take down the original version of that, that form, just so as not to create any confusion, but thank you to Mr. Biskin for working on new version of that form, the electronic version that's now posted.
Excellent. Um, board, are there any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the Policy Approval Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Blatner?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kolevitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we have two action items tonight. The first one is approval to post the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar for public review and comment. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, I'm going to actually, uh, introduce, uh, Mr. Biskin, let him, if he's got, uh, any comments to make. He, uh, really led the effort on bringing to you the, the proposed calendar that, uh, we're asking you to put out for public review and posting. So, Mr. Biskin?
So we, we worked with a cross-section of, uh, staff across all of the three levels, uh, with Mr. Khan and myself, and we worked through, uh, we looked at past calendars and how we fell on that second week of August. We looked at different options, uh, perhaps starting a week later, but if, if we did that, there'd be a pronounced difference between the first semester and the second, so we stuck to what we've done in the past, and as you can see, we're starting on, in terms of students and their first day on the fourteenth. There are a couple of unique challenges, uh, with this calendar also in the first half of the school year. We have, uh, the November fifth election day, that is, uh, a holiday, and then we have, uh, Christmas falling on a Wednesday, uh, so that sort of takes that, that whole week out. So, uh, that sort of helped us decide as to where we started, and, uh, what we're going to do now, what we want to do is we're posting this, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed calendar, and then we want to reconvene, uh, at a, at a later date this school year after ISBE, provide some guidance for the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar, and then perhaps we can get those two done also, uh, later on.
We, we stuck to just one thing that I want to mention. I think, uh, overwhelming, uh, driving feedback from the board in the previous calendar, right, that was established, was getting that first semester done, uh, prior to, to winter break, and so that still remained, uh, our guidepost was staying to, uh, that principle, which, uh, again, with a few of these other nuances, kind of led us to, uh, to the, the start date that you, you see. So that, that really continued to be the driving principle that, uh, we, we wanted to, uh, to honor. We, uh, obviously are, uh, kind of year two of that adjustment this year, and, uh, wanted to, to continue to make sure that that obviously is of the interest of the board and, and community as we look at, uh, the options.
I'm just, I was about that.
Have we received or looked at feedback from staff and community about how it worked last year with switching the finals and switching the calendar?
Yeah, we, we did right after the, the calendar piece, so I think, uh, Mr. Smith actually did, uh, the survey last year and received some feedback, uh, actually cross-section, right, uh, of stakeholders, and I think actually we shared that with the board. I can, I can certainly re, uh, re-bring that, that to you, so you have it, but...
Okay. Was the survey to all parents or students?
Let me make sure, yeah, definitely we, we asked, uh, students, Mr. Biskin, you might remember the, the specifics around that. Mr. Smith led that effort.
Yeah, there were, there was, uh, feedback from students and staff. I mean, at, at the high school level, there was an overwhelming acceptance of ending the first term prior to the break. That is something we had been working on for a number of years, but obviously with COVID that got pushed, pushed back, but we were able to then do, do that, but it was accepted at a, at a very high level.
Based on feedback from last year, like not prior to that?
Yes.
Correct.
I have two other questions. On the proposed calendar, is October eleventh a non-school day?
Uh, that is, that is considered a student attendance day by ISBE. Uh, this is new this year, and October tenth and eleventh, we have district-wide parent-teacher conferences. Uh, the, the first round of those on the tenth, students will attend school all day, and then there's a four PM to eight PM, uh, slot, and then on the eleventh, it is an eight AM to twelve PM slot, uh, so that is how those two days will now work.
Right, so will students be in school on the eleventh?
They, they will not be.
Okay, because I don't feel this, like, at least how it's marked up, I don't feel that it's obvious that it's not a...
I can, I can add that on there. I can make sure that that's very clear.
And so that's a non-school, student attendance school day, however, it is considered a student attendance school day, so it's really eighty-one days instead of eighty-two?
It is, it's considered eighty-two through ISBE, yes.
Okay.
Just for clarity, so, uh, in, in your current calendar this year, uh, one of the days of Thanksgiving week is actually considered for ISBE purposes an attendance day because we do only evening parent-teacher conferences. So, uh, ISBE and their calendar guidance gives districts options. If you do only evening parent-teacher conferences and over two nights, uh, the amassed amount of conference time equals that of a school day that counts as a school day that can be, that is credited. So there's a, there's technically a non-attendance day in your calendar now that is considered an attendance day for that purpose.
I'm curious if this year we're counting it as a, I mean, I guess both years you're counting it as an attendance day, but one day it's truly, I feel like we're adding an extra non-attendance day.
Yep.
Because Thanksgiving, we, like, if, if it falls in the, the week of Thanksgiving, that's considered a non-attendance day, so we're adding the eleventh as a non-attendance day, but ISBE recognized attendance day. If, if, if we're adding another non-attendance day to the first semester, that, it concerns me, but I just want to give that feedback.
Any other feedback from board members?
Those are all issues we talked about over the years when we were trying to work towards this.
I just wanted to bring John and Eric into it.
Yeah, um, just real, two, so October eleventh is supposed to be gray, is that what that should be?
Yes.
And then just up in the center gray box, it says eight, uh, October eleventh says eight to twelve AM? I think that should be PM.
PM. Yeah. We will fix that.
Board, any additional comments or questions?
Yeah, one more thing that I forgot. So October fourteenth, that's Columbus Day Indigenous People, is it Indigenous Peoples' Day? Is that a required day out of school for, by the state?
It is not a required, it is a holiday. It is one of the holidays you have the ability to waive, meaning you could hold school on, on Columbus Day.
Thank you, Brad. That was my third question that I didn't get to. No, you didn't interrupt me. No, I didn't mean it that way at all. Um, I had forgotten that it was a question because I do think that could be a way of giving a day back to first semester, having just had the holiday, um, this week and feeling that there wasn't a whole lot of celebration on Monday of the holiday as intended, it might be better to have that as a school day.
Yeah, that, that was my comment last year when we talked about that specific date. I kind of view it similar to Veterans Day. There's value in being in school that day. That's my opinion, and we'll see what the community says if they weigh in on the calendar.
Right.
Well, and it looks like if that, if Columbus Indigenous People Day is left as a holiday, then it will be a four-day, potential four-day weekend for students, sort of, because of the eleventh.
I just do want to make a comment, because I looked at it because I remember your comments from last year, Angela, and if we, the only alternative, well, there's a couple of alternatives, but I don't think they're viable, the traditional week off of Thanksgiving, not, you know, and I, I think it's, you know, I don't have firsthand knowledge, but my recollection from all the years of discussing this is strong preference from the community to keep that. Then the other choice is moving finals. So I looked at it and, I mean, I, I would think if we did move finals back to after Christmas, they would have to be the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, right? You wouldn't, I don't think you would come back from break and do finals right out of the break, like, I think you'd want to have a few days of prep. So that would, if you, so that would be seven days, right? If we did finals on thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, and then you're eighty-six and eighty-nine, but to the, you know, you'd be eighty-nine in the first and eighty-six. So then you achieve the balanced schedule, but people, I mean, it, it, the feedback is very strong of wanting finals done, so... finals done. So, I don't, you know, so I understand the concern. I don't know how big of a deal it really is, except for some selected elective classes in terms of total instruction for the year. So, that's just my feedback.
And so, my thought on that is that if we were to move finals into January, we would potentially have a later start date in August. So, that, because starting on August 14th is a bit early, and also even ending on May 28th, 29th is early. Yeah, I'm wondering, you mentioned the feedback we've received, what's the first thing you said, the feedback that we've received in the past about, not finals, but you mentioned something else?
Thanksgiving Week.
Thanksgiving Week, yes. So, I'm wondering if that's something that we perhaps should see what the community feels about that now. Like, in the past, they were passionate about it, but perhaps things have changed that would change their thinking. And also about finals, I just, very anecdotally, and a couple of teachers that I talked with about, high school teachers about finals, what I heard is that when it got time to take finals at the end of December, right before Christmas break, kids were tuned out. They were, you know, they were kind of already mentally heading into winter break. So, I understand that it's better not to have that hanging over you, but I wonder if for students, they might come back fresh and be able to take their finals and perform better and have better learning. Just a thought there. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I think you've covered this, but can you refresh it? What, like, can you clarify the, like, we've surveyed people on these factors that we're talking about, right?
We, this year, we did not survey specifically around, like, breaks and those pieces off. We have done that many times in the past, and the feedback around that full week at Thanksgiving, and actually the design of even the two-week winter break has always been very strong. Again, what we focused on in this one-year calendar was really that issue of finals before break, and certainly I hear the feedback, I will just say, in the survey last year overwhelmingly, that feedback was very positive about that change. But again, I'm happy to reshare that survey with the board if you don't still have that, so...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, and I wanted that we had a mechanism to kind of gather that. All right, thank you.
And my only point with that is that data predates COVID.
No.
It doesn't?
No.
Not the feedback from last year, but the feedback about?
About the week at?
About the week of Thanksgiving.
Yes, 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 that data does, absolutely.
Just to add specifics to this, we surveyed 975 students at the high school level, and a little over 95% of the students said they were satisfied and happy with finals prior to the break. I mean, I, being at the high school for as long as I was, I totally, there are pros and cons, you know, to both sides, but there was a sense of accomplishment and relief when finals were executed prior to break from the students and from staff. But, you know, we certainly look, when we're looking to try to pass the next two years after this, there are questions that we have to continue to ask and gather feedback.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Just a quick comment. I mean, we want feedback. This action item is posting it for public review and comment. So, this is a 30-day window for our community to give us that feedback.
Anyone else? My only feedback would be, I want, I hear everyone's point about balance and days. I get it. I think the feedback from community would be really important. As a board member, what I'm concerned about is whipsawing our community around, going back and forth, and so that weighs in on me, right? And I think about that. I think about the consistency of the calendar and changing it back and forth, finals back and forth. I'm challenged by that, but we'll see what the feedback is from the community for sure. All right, thank you. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the 2024-2025 calendar to be posted in order to garner feedback from the school community as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we have a second action item, which is number five from the consent agenda, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Any comments, Dr. Schuler?
I don't have any specific comment. I don't know if this was just being pulled out to be voted on separate, or if there was a specific?
So, Ms. Blatner, you pulled this out?
I think, yes, in pre-meeting questions, and I received your answer as everyone did. I questioned more information on item, on page, page three, Roman numeral four, rejection from resignation request of teacher.
Yeah.
We were going to get more information on that.
So, are you specifically looking for information on that teacher?
On the situation.
So, I would advise then, for the board, let's wait then till after closed session to vote on this item, because that would be more appropriate discussion, closed session.
I agree.
So, we will, we will move this to action after our closed session. All right, we're into oral reports. We have three oral reports on the agenda tonight. The first oral report, the COPS grant, building hardware site management systems. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so Dr. O'Keefe is making his way up to the podium. He's gonna guide the board through this item. So, this item actually came again through Facilities Committee, so I think at our last meeting, I think Mr. Paulson may have, well, actually, there were a couple of things that made the request together. I think there was a request for us to bring some more information around visitor management systems and specifically use of those. I think I mentioned that we had worked on the COPS grant over a period of time and wanted to give you a little bit more of a holistic perspective around safety and where we've been with the analysis that went into the grant, and then kind of tie the visitor management piece into that. So, Dr. O'Keefe, I'm gonna hand it to you.
Great, thank you. We do have 60 minutes set aside for this topic, so we should be just fine. In general, so what is COPS grant, and specifically, where does this come from, and why is it in front of you, and what did we do so far in this past calendar year to find a different assistance that can help us on a federal level? So, specifically, COPS is Community Oriented Policing Services. That's an organization, really a division within U.S. Department of Justice. That specific division is responsible for and managing school violence or school prevention violence grants throughout the country. So, specifically, there are grants that are available to school districts and other governmental agencies that we can apply for that would assist us with specifically violence prevention, whether that be through programming or specific hardware. We're talking about hardware tonight. So, the overall purpose of this grant, as you can see up on the screen, is just to assist states, units of local government, or Indian tribes to improve security at schools and on school grounds in the jurisdiction of the grantee, so that would be us if we were granted the grant, through evidence-based schools, safety programs, and technology, and that's where our biggest focus is. So, this grant specifically is eligible for five, there are five major categories that are eligible, local and state law enforcement, units of local government, like school districts, federally recognized Indian tribes, and then public, other public government agencies. The funding, and certainly this is part of the challenge, there's a lot of governing agencies throughout this country, specifically more than 7,000 in this state alone. Within this specific grant, there's $73 million allocated for the most recent grant year, which was submitted in May, and we anticipate hearing whether we've been accepted or not by the end of this month. But, $73 million available, this is a three-year period, so we don't have to force-feed ourselves and do everything over one summer. We would have three fiscal years to work through this. A maximum federal share is $500,000. There is a local portion to it, so it's a 75-25 split, but not a $500,000. So, we can exceed $500,000, and we did in our request. So, our request is about $665,000, and when you pull 75% out of that, we're almost exactly at $500,000 that we're asking from the federal government for that grant. So, again, 75%, and these are the major categories that the grant focuses on. I'll point to number, the third bullet, not specifically metal detectors, but locks, lighting, and other deterrent measures, areas like cameras, door security, fob systems certainly fit into that conversation, and then any other measure that COPS in and of itself determines may provide a significant improvement to security, and we'll walk through a few of those. So, how did this all come together? So, this conversation actually started more than a year ago, looking at the opportunity to apply for the COPS grant, better understand the systems that we have in place inside of our district. So, we put together a team of Dr. Kyle, who's moved on now, he was our conduit to the District-wide Safety Committee Team, Mr. Spencer, Mr. Weisenberger, our Director of Facilities, Mr. Fig, who works within our technology group for Mr. Spencer, myself, and then we ended up hiring an external grant writer that had specific experience in putting through and actually getting COPS grants from the federal government. That work began, as I said, just about a year ago, and that work was due in May. So, the grant was actually due May 17th. So, what did we do in advance of this to try to understand our system, and then how potentially this grant could help us? We really looked at two major areas. One is what existing measures from a security and safety perspective do we have in place when we're talking about hardware? And then, secondly, what additional measures do we think that group, or did that group specifically think we should consider for the future? So, we really broke this into two major categories. What are we doing today? If there's anything we need to adjust for today, and then what would we consider doing or like to do in the future? So, actively addressing means this is always on our mind. We're always making sure that our door locks, none of this is stating that we are in a state of panic and we are not a safe district, but this is what we live and breathe by every single day. Door locks, door buzzers, panic alarms in each of our schools, which get tested twice a year, an internal school communication system called InformaCast, which can be used for emergency and non-emergency purposes. We had a very inconsistent walkie standard throughout the whole district with different models, different manufacturers, different ages, who pays for what. So, we established a new standard for that, and in essence, it's specifically facilities take care of any repairs and replacing units, but then the buildings through their own building budgets would take care of any batteries that failed during the year. We certainly had to talk about, since we weren't at the point of being granted a grant and did not have budgetary dollars set aside for this, if a camera fails, what do we do? So, and we just can't let it not work. So, we talked through purchasing individual replacement cameras that reach end of life, and then, last but not certainly not least, Dr. Kyle, Mr. Spencer, Mr. Weisenberger, Mr. Kish spent a lot of time walking almost every single one of our buildings to make sure that all of our speakers, overhead sound systems, intercoms were working appropriately, and then where they weren't, we certainly, if we could fix it ourselves, we did. If not, we brought in an outside organization that we worked for before. Kind of the dream side of things is where the COPS grant falls into. So, what were we actively investigating? Certainly, the most number of cameras that we have are at our high school systems. There's more than 100 cameras at each high school, so a significant amount of infrastructure and hardware necessary for that. We're talking about additional cameras and updating cameras at middle schools, talked about what do we need to do from an elementary perspective, mostly focused on the exterior side of those buildings, especially in buildings where we were doing outside facility upgrades, like new playgrounds as a whole, to make sure that we have a good view and monitor of those. And then, two other main areas of, you know, can't we move to a keyless or fob entry system that's consistent throughout the district? We have a few of those in our buildings, specifically High School Jefferson and over at Hubble, but not throughout, and there are different systems. And then, last, but certainly not least, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, you know, should we consider a standardized visitor guest ID management system when we have folks coming into our buildings? What do we end up doing? Just through our internal team and then talking to administration, we put all these specific priorities in order, and then got feedback and ranked them. So, you can see the rankings of 1 through 12, and what we did is to use these rankings to help us define exactly what we were going to put into the COPS grant. So, cameras at the high schools came out number one, keyless or fob M3 on select doors at the high schools was second, same thing, but at the middle schools was third, same thing, but elementary schools was fourth, and that's really where we got to the end of the COPS grant, as I'll show you shortly. You'd be amazed how quickly $500,000 goes quickly when you're talking about major hardware upgrades, because there's other aspects to this too, licensing and other things that I'll mention in the future. So, really, the COPS grants focused on the top four, and we still have work to do with numbers five through eight, whether we receive the COPS grant or we don't receive the COPS grant. So, in the submission, again, new camera systems at the high schools, both interior and exterior, that's completely repurposing everything that we have in the high school, replacing all cameras with new cameras. You'll see there's a ton of installation and cabling of all cameras that work, additional work that's gonna have to be done, but cost includes licensing for each of those cameras, purchasing more servers that we can, you know, house those cameras on, the licensing for those servers, updated switches to support the new camera systems. If we look at new exterior door digital swipe or fob entry systems, we did, we looked at that specifically for every single building that is within the district. That includes SSC, Woodland, and Transition to make sure that we have uniformity throughout, but there are selected specific doors that we would look at at each level. It's not every door at every level. And then, certainly, our door intercom systems where we need to do those updates. So, imagine walking up and pushing that button as you experience, there's a camera that looks at you, there's a buzzer that lets you into a secured vestibule. So, we'd look at replacing what those camera systems are, because we do have some old CCTV systems that are not in our network that we don't have full control over. So, that would be a part of that process too. And then, at least from a discussion perspective, how this actually plays out if the grant is awarded. If we're talking about doing, you know, a large amount of this work in a short period of time, internally, we don't have the resources to support that. We would look to an external resource, but if we end up spacing this out over a period of three years and we kind of bite it off in chunks, we might be able to look at reducing what those potential costs could be through an outside third party and doing some of the work ourselves. So, just a quick little overview of where this is at to give you a sense of the numbers. I'm not gonna read this line-by-line item, but you see all those different categories adds up to, and this is the grant that we submitted, the total of $665,575. You back out what the maximum award is, which fits into the 75-25 cost-sharing program. That would leave roughly $165,000, assuming all of these estimated prices are completely accurate and in place by the time we actually get to this, if in fact, we are awarded it. So, we potentially will be asking you, if awarded, for some local dollars to build into the budget associated with this. The challenge with a grant like this is time. Takes a long, takes a long time to get the information back. I looked at their, at the COPS website today, every single grant coming through that subdivision of the Department of Justice, and there's about 40, is indicating that they are going to release announcements by the end of the month. They don't tell you when, they don't tell you how, and they don't tell you through what mechanism, but we should hear by the end of this month whether or not we have been awarded the grant. So, a couple of major things, we just talked about that last part, but we submitted the grant on May 10th. That organization actually came back to us for some updates and changes in July that Jason and his team took care of, and now we're waiting to hear. Further discussion, though, really two points for the board to consider moving forward. There's a lot put into this grant, a significant amount of dollars in hardware, to take a huge leap in just updating the infrastructure as it relates to cameras, door systems, keyless fob systems. But if it's not awarded, are all these things still a priority from the board's perspective? And then, if it is awarded, how do we discuss and how do we approach updating cameras at middle schools, elementary schools, and then specifically, you know, is it wise or would it be worthwhile to put a uniform visitor management system in all buildings?
Thank you, Board. Any questions?
I have a few. The, Senator, there's over 100 cameras at high schools. How old are those cameras?
They vary. Some we've had to replace in the last year because they've gone out, others, Jason, eight-to-10-year range.
And the reason for the extensive infrastructure cabling and so forth, is that just technology, newer technology in the newer cameras than the existing ones?
Yeah, it's updating the cabling, if it's not to the specific level of the new camera systems, to make sure that it is that way if we have to replace things in the future because they fail there. We've got a uniform system throughout.
Okay, and then, we have some cameras at middle school and elementary school?
No cameras at elementary?
None, not even at the entries?
Not even at the entries.
Okay.
I mean, we've got the door systems.
Take that back, the door system.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But not any exterior mounted cameras on the walls of those schools.
Okay, and realizing this is probably, the item's five through, so you said that... And, um, realizing this is probably, uh, the items five through, so you said this grant covers items one through four on the list, correct?
Correct.
Any ballpark figures for the total investment of five through 12?
Not yet.
Okay.
My guess is it'd be somewhat similar, just in the matter of the amount of cameras at the middle school, when you put all those together, is probably going to equal the amount of cameras at both high schools. I do want to mention to the board that if we do get funding this first time, we are still eligible to apply again two more times for another $500,000 each time. So, that is another mechanism we could investigate.
Yeah. So, to kind of put a fence around it, probably another half a million to three-quarters of a million for that five to 12.
I don't think that's an unreasonable estimate today.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason, one point too, since you mentioned the opportunity to request again and be awarded again. Also, if we're not awarded, that external agency that we went through, minimal dollars to hire some experts, they would actually help us rewrite the grant and resubmit it at no cost.
Dave, I think Jason answered the question on really the middle and the elementary school camera, the visitor management system. We're going to have to get updated pricing. There are a few different systems. My estimate is that those are about $1,500 a building for visitor management.
Yeah. So, that half a million to three-quarters of a million is not going to be off.
Not substantial.
Not a huge amount. Assuming we have reasonable.
Not substantial. Yeah. I think the long-term, really, that camera discussion at the middle school, that's a bigger chunk than the visitor management piece, even in, even though in order of priority of the team, they put it in the order they had hit there. From an impact perspective, obviously, the visitor management piece is a smaller kind of overall dollar impact. We did talk about that with the Facilities Committee as we were looking at it. We did also identify not enough to address that middle school camera area. You do have one other potential source of revenue you could tap into for consideration in that we did not book in revenue for this year. What we now expect to be the distributions coming from the vaping litigation. And we will have some dollars. They would not be big enough to cover the camera element and that half a million dollar chunk. They certainly would be big enough to cover the visitor management piece. So, you do have some option there.
And then, um, reasonable to guess that the funding in the next two years would be similar, the 73 million? I guess what, really, my question is, we can use our success or failure this time as a barometer for our likelihood of success in the next two applications.
Fair. The challenge with the grant itself is until the Department of Justice announces that the grants are available, we don't know what those total allocations are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We don't even get a sense of what those allocations are. They just show up on the website one day and you're ready to go.
Yeah. And then, it becomes a matter of, even if we do think we're going to be successful, it becomes a, an issue of prioritization. And what do we want to wait on, or what do we feel we need to do?
Correct.
And not wait for two more years.
Yeah. And certainly, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, that vaping litigation, those first couple payments, assuming information that's been shared with us is accurate, should happen before the end of the year, that would certainly help to offset the visitor management system and certainly some of your local share related to this project, if in fact, the grant is awarded to us.
And most of this work would be summer work?
Yeah, we, yeah, we'd probably be looking at, there are some things that we can't do during the year, but running cables and doing that type of stuff, that's summer work. And then, you know, plug and play on the cameras themselves, it can happen really year-round.
Not to mention, I don't actually know that you'd want to disrupt your existing camera system in the middle of the year. The last thing you'd want to do is potentially lose that whole system if there was something unexpected and wonky. So, that's probably a better summer transition where you've got ample time to replace and test.
Okay. Now, I'm done.
For these, for these new items, what's the expected lifetime? Is it, again, eight to 10 years on the cameras?
Yeah, eight to 10 years is about what we figured out.
And then, the licensing costs, is that one-time or ongoing?
Ongoing.
Yeah, well, the cameras that we selected are a one-time license. Now, if we do door visitor systems, like a Raptor-type system, that could have a licensing that's ongoing. Thank you.
Any other questions from Board members?
Looking at this total of 73 million, do I understand that right?
Yes, sir.
And over, this is a national program?
Yes, sir.
If everybody gets half a million, it looks to me like there's not very many districts that get it.
Everybody wants to be awarded the full maximum amount. It would be 146 awardees.
So, what are our odds?
If I knew that, I don't know if I'd be standing here.
Any other questions from Board members?
We've got that side of the table, taken care of.
I have a few questions. So, in the priority areas that the Grant Committee, which included the District Safety Committee, came up with, just to clarify, our Safety Committee includes local law enforcement. So, they weighed in on which priorities were more important.
Yeah, it was Dr. Kyle's responsibility to make sure that local law enforcement was aware that we were applying for the grant, was aware specifically of what we were looking at in the grant, and that there weren't any either overlaps or access that they would have themselves, or concerns about specifically what we were looking at. But since everything was hardware-based, pretty simplistic for them to, you know, just provide resources to us if necessary.
And as part of the grant, the local law enforcement has to sign off on the grant itself.
Okay. So, in terms of the ranking, they are also in agreement that the higher-ranked matters are more impactful.
Yeah, especially when you look at the amount of visual aspects that we have and views throughout the two high schools, you're talking more than 200 camera systems, covering just about 900-plus thousand square feet. Pretty, pretty significant. When you bite off that major chunk, it certainly makes things easier as we go down the rest of the system.
Yeah, I'll tell you, so, general, just, I have less direct involvement than I think even, you know, Matt and certainly Charlie had with local law enforcement. Their priority typically is around visual access. I mean, for the issues they often problem-solve with us, the ability to quickly access visual on a building, both real-time, because we actually give them some ability to help to do that, the quicker we can get them visual access, the quicker they're able to problem-solve. So, they've generally always, you know, put that even as you move down through the items. I think visitor management, they're good systems. They haven't had any issue with the system. I think our committee has felt over time that there were alternate means to still address that safety measure. A camera, either have one or you don't have one, right? There's not, uh, not alternate means other than putting more physical eyes in a classroom, and you just don't have that capability of putting that kind of...
That was my only question. I just wanted to make sure that they were aligned with what was more impactful.
Can you go to the last slide? I'm going to focus on your two questions. So, we did talk about this at the Facility Committee meeting in terms of funding priority. I don't, my opinion, I don't know how we don't prioritize something that's a student safety issue. I think that's maybe the most important thing we should talk about. And actually, we'll talk about the high school ambassador interviews that we did, and that did come up with some of the students about feeling safe. So, for me, absolutely, if not the most, some funding priority, it's right up there. In terms of phasing it in, I'd rather do it all at one time. I don't want to have to pick one school or another, or one system or another that feels difficult, and I'd rather, you know, engage a third-party consultant, a contractor, to get it done as fast as possible.
Any other questions from Board members? Angela?
Have a couple. Thank you, Brian. And I want to just piggyback on Brad. So, safety is a fundamental, primary need, you know? So, obviously, I, if you're not safe, then you can't learn, you know? And I think definitely where we should be focused in our allocation of funds. Um, so, I'm going to actually go back to something Jason said. If in eight to 10 years, we anticipate that every eight to 10 years, we're going to need to refresh the cameras or some sort of security system, I wonder that it shouldn't be built into our operations budget in some way, because that's a pretty significant amount, and we are not going to always be able to rely on grants. And to John's point, we're not even sure what we can anticipate getting for the grant. So, that's one thing. Then, so, in the spirit of no question is a dumb question, and I know this is going to sound like a dumb question, what's the advantage to having a keyless FOB entry?
Well, if I could, if I had my ring of 50 to 60 keys that allow me to get into every building and every part of the building, so, really, it's twofold for me. One, a uniform system that we have control over who has access to the building through that specific FOB that is assigned to an individual is a very common practice in education. Certainly, we see it on the corporate side of it too. You just can't walk into any building on your own without some form of access to it. Secondarily, what I, I won't say worry, because that's probably too strong, what we certainly have to be careful about is when keys go missing, whose hands are they in? And then, specifically, do we need to worry about whether or not that individual will use that key to get inside of one of our buildings? So, just uniformity of systems across the board, so we have better control over who has access to our buildings. And then, just for me, I don't know that we can remove every key, but if we can remove a significant number of keys throughout the system, it's just, it's easier to manage that. Keys are expensive. A lost key is about five bucks for every single lost key, because we have to get a specialty cut. Imagine 50 lost keys a month throughout the district. So, I don't think it's also good value in terms of the system that we have.
You can, you can disable those FOBs too, if you need to turn one of them off.
Correct. You have full access and full control over them from anywhere in the world, 365.
So, if an employee left the district, you can disable their FOB?
Correct.
And what's the cost to replace a FOB?
Those are actually cheaper than keys. Those are two to three bucks, we've been told. Depending on what you're buying and the specific technology that's in the inside of it, but just a basic FOB that reacts to a system that's controlled by software behind the process, it's relatively inexpensive compared to a standard key.
Okay. And if there were a power outage, I'm assuming there's a generator backup, but what happens? Is there still a key?
I mean, we would still at some point have to have keys for security purposes, but every single individual in this district having a key, it wouldn't be necessary.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for answering my unintelligent question.
No, it was a very good question.
I had the same question, but what I thought was the answer was different than what you said. So, I assumed the advantage of keyless entry was that law enforcement would be able to get quicker access to the school if needed. Is that a capability of that? Like, if they needed to get access, would they be able to get in quicker?
Yeah, I mean, they have keys now to our buildings, so they would, you know, have the FOB access to. For me, for me, it's all about who's controlling access to the building. Like, I don't feel like we're in, me personally. I don't feel like with as many keys as we have, or as many situations throughout our district, that we can fully control exactly where all those keys end up. But I know in a FOB system, with or without a power outage specifically, we can see exactly who's going in and out of buildings and have better measures of control behind the scenes too. It actually provides us better data behind the scenes too. Who's entering buildings at what time, for what purpose? Are there trusted adults with those single individuals going into buildings, things like that?
Any other questions?
One last question. So, what is the cost for Raptor for the elementary and middle schools?
Again, so that those visitor management systems are about $1,500. There are a couple of different systems. So, we would have to establish, one, we'd want to establish a standard system. I don't know that Raptor would necessarily be the one. There are a couple we could evaluate, but about $1,500 a building.
And that's a one-time cost?
There is a one-time cost, and then, there's some licensing element that's recurring. I don't know exactly what the annual licensing cost is. It's not as much as a $1,500 upfront piece.
Okay. I would be interested just in knowing, like, what the different options and costs are. I'm very uncomfortable with the thought of, and I know this would have to go through us anyway, but the community feeling strongly about having some of that at elementary and middle schools. I would not want to put that on PTAs to raise money for that.
Yeah. I don't think it should be a fundraise item either. That's why it's in front of the Board. Candidly, I would not recommend that you leave that fundraising. If it's a safety standard, it needs to be a safety standard.
Agreed. Thank you.
Any other questions, Board?
I would just echo Brad. I'd say get this done as soon as possible.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? All right. Thank you. Uh, second oral report is performance contracting. Dr. Schuler?
Dr. O'Keefe.
60 minutes, huh? That's right. That's right.
Not quite that one yet. One on the far right, there you go. Nope. Overshot it twice. Not quite that one yet either. The actual PowerPoint presentation, bottom right, guaranteed energy savings contracts? Thank you. Another item coming out of Facilities Committee to share with the Board, just to, in essence, the goal of this is to provide the Board with some education about what these specific contracts are. We've been utilizing these contracts in the district for more than a decade now. I'll explain a little bit about, this is high-level, a little bit about the contract side of things, some advantages to it that we've seen, some responsibilities that come from the Energy Savings, Energy Savings Company. But I'll say this, I am no expert on guaranteed energy savings contracts. That's, we rely on our partners. My first experiences in these contracts was coming into the district just a couple of years ago. So, here to provide information, certainly answer as many questions as I can, if there's anything specific that we need to dig further into. Happy to do so. So, just a few things that we'll walk through. What exactly is it? Let's talk about a meeting. What types of saving opportunities do these contracts present us? What accountability is in place with these contracts? What are any, if there are advantages, what are they? And then, specifically, how does this all work? So, G, so, another acronym in education, GESC, so Guaranteed Energy Savings Contracts. That law was adopted in April of 93. There are specific terms that we can look at. The earliest is a 10-year term, the longest is a 20-year term in the contract. This is different than a standard bid that gets put on the streets, for instance, through work that we do with Leggett. So, it's a competitive procurement via RFP. It's not a standard bid. We have the ability to select what we believe is the best solution. We are not required underneath this law to submit the lowest submitted price. Certainly, the mindset in this is that we're buying results, we're buying upgrades, we're buying efficiency, not just equipment itself. There is specific individual accountability. So, the company that we work with, that did all the work for us, that Lowell this past summer, Performance Services, Inc., there, we go to them for everything. There is no, we don't work with any subs, we don't work with a GC or a construction manager, everything runs through their house. In these programs, there are no change orders allowed. That's part of the law. And then, certainly, if everything works the way that we would hope it works, and we've got good results overall, we'd be looking at lowering costs and certainly increasing speeds of delivery. So, what is, so, what does it really actually mean? So, it means that an energy services company guarantees annual measurable monetary reduction in utility and operating and maintenance costs for each year of the guarantee period. So, if we, if we enter into a contract for a 10-year guarantee period, there is a guarantee for that whole period, and then, that gets broken down year by year. The important thing to note here is the guarantees are actually specified around adhering to operating schedules and set points that are historically available to the energy savings services company, excuse me. They're not tied specifically to cost savings when it comes to utility rates that change, building operations, if those change over time, or how we use our systems as a whole. So, they look at a standard baseline approach. What do we use? And then, they use that to build the guarantee. We vary outside of that, then that's not part of the guarantee, that's on us. So, there's really two different areas here that we look at guarantees. So, one is referred to as a measured and verified guarantee. So, that's a proven guarantee that's put in writing. Typically, that's put in place for weather-dependent energy improvements, so things like HVAC systems, HVAC equipment controls associated with it. So, that specifically looks at what we've done at Lowell, what we've done here at S... So that specifically looks at what we've done at Lowell, what we've done here at Sandberg, what we've done at Washington, upgrades that we did at Warrenville South. So big energy systems as a whole. And then the ESCO itself is also responsible over time for monitoring and assisting us to make sure that those systems, even beyond the warranty side of things, are operating as efficiently as they are subscribed. Also a lesser known, lesser used stipulated guarantee. So it's a guarantee that's agreed to upfront and that's really more independent energy system. So if we're doing anything significant from a water perspective, plumbing, any major upgrades. There is some lighting savings in this that we agree to and that were a part of the work that was done this past summer, specifically at Washington and at Lowell. And really this, these are more, these are still big dollars as a whole. But they could be just projects that we're looking at for upgrading that really don't carry too many energy savings associated with it. Areas that we look at and we've used the top three of these already. So boilers, chillers, VFDs, which are the things. Brad, hopefully I get this right because I'm not an expert again. In the roof above, like our ceilings, not on the roof, but above our ceilings that help move air. All the equipment that helps move air throughout the building. We certainly if interested, we have not been though. Look at kitchen equipment, solar would be a part of this and then geothermal could also be a part of this. So as described, and there's two parties to this conversation. There's those that are architects that look at it one way and then those that are companies that do this type of business. So in a traditional construction method, a lot of people involved in that process. What is stated specifically here is there's one cook in the kitchen with full accountability and our partner Performance Services, Inc. has been that so-called chef or cook. If you just look at the overall structures themselves, similar, but the main difference is there's a lot more subwork that gets done and is planned on the plan and spec side, the traditional bid side, that falls potentially into conversations that we have when we're working through these projects. But again, on the guaranteed energy savings contract, we go directly to who that provider is. Some of the advantages that have been stated publicly, there is one point of accountability, ideally through this process, especially with the guarantees put in place, expected reduction in overall construction costs and long-term utility usage. There are guarantees put in place, so we're in control, you're in control from an ownership perspective. There are no change orders again. The idea is energy savings and that we can certainly use local dollars like we have been to pay for these projects. One of the things that we actually do when we go through the process is we're involved in design. We're involved in understanding who the contractors are. We're involved in the equipment, we're involved in the quality of work that's being done by walking buildings over the summer. Certainly we know the price upfront and I've got an example of what that looks like for you that I'll mention in a minute. And then the overall value of just a one collective source all in. Change orders, big deal. Change orders occur in traditional project specs all the time through bids. It's actually built into bid documents specifically what our thresholds are for potential change holders. So from a G E S C or an ESCO point of measure, it's, they're on the hook for this. So if there's no change orders and the bottom line is the bottom line, anything that happens within that bottom line belongs to them. They are not allowed by law to ask us for a single more penny. So how does this all work? We actually define the needs at board approval a few months ago to put projects back out on the street. We specifically then sit with Performance Services and walk through what we're looking at, understanding what the needs are. They put together all the documentation, the drawings. They go out and solicit all of the financial information from those vendors. They do then bring back to us, and there's a sample of this in your green folder. This is called open book pricing. So it's a line-by-line pricing item of everything associated with what our projects were for this past summer. So it breaks it down vendor by vendor, project by project, totals it. So the description behind it is that transparent process as a whole, all of these prices are competitively submitted, managed by specifically the ESCO. If there is a recommendation, then we would bring it to facility committee and turn to the Board of Education for recommendation and approval. And then ultimately, we hold the ESCO responsible for delivering all the identified deliverables with inside that given project to projects.
Board, any questions?
Can I just put one thing we should have mentioned at the front end? So rationale giving you this background is that we have looked at both this model and kind of the traditional delivery model for some of our projected work into next summer. Probably the first approval that's going to come to the board is a guaranteed savings contract approval. And I think facilities committee just felt it important to make sure you had some foundation to understand that before it comes to you for approval. So there's nothing actively on your agenda tonight. Just this is background to kind of help you understand what's coming.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. The reason why we traditionally, we try to package everything together regardless of the method that's being used. But the lag time for equipment as it relates to HVAC and those types of systems, certainly longer than some of the other standard things that we're looking at accomplishing next summer. So instead of trying to bring that all to you for approval in December, it's possible if in fact the work is done, that we would bring that to you sooner or meeting next month.
Board? Go ahead, Brad.
Okay, I'll weigh in. Facility committee is driving the agenda tonight. So I've got kind of professional and community service conflicts all over the place on this topic. You know, so this this delivery method has worked very well for our district. One of the things I asked for, which I think is what this book shows is like, kind of, can you prove the energy savings that we contract with each year? This looks like like a couple of years ago. I'm curious over time, how has this worked?
So Brad, just real quick in that, yes, sorry, I did not mention this. This is just one specific annual report from related to phase 10. You can see that that was the work that was done in the summer of 2021. And it talks about all that work in that area. Of every single phase, they are responsible for bringing us these reports. In the first three years of each of those phases, the reports have no cost to them. There is a cost to those reports after that, but certainly knowing where we're at and trying to understand exactly if in fact these systems are doing what we anticipate and we are saving energy and dollars long-term are effective as they are advertised to be. And then A, this also helps us hold PSI accountable for deliverable. Because if these guarantees are not met, they are responsible to pay us out of pocket for the difference between what we did achieve and then what they promised us we should have achieved.
So it's kind of from my professional perspective, I've been pretty visible and vocal within the, within this delivery method. And there's definitely examples of this that this is not, it's almost unethical, not in this district. I feel like when I first got on the board, we've been very careful to stick to strict energy enhancements. And by the way, all these HVAC improvements are not only energy, but they create a better learning environment for kids. Let's not forget that. So I feel like the things that I have problems with professionally, the way we've implemented this here in District 200 has been held true to the spirit of the law that was developed. I think we've done a good job in kind of, you know, working with Performance Services. I get all the benefits that Brian outlined are all legitimate. I think the process has worked well for us. Kind of as I sit right now, that I have a lot of different kind of professional conflicts. So I will be abstaining on this at the next meeting like I did last year. I have relationships with Performance Services, both as a potential collaborator as well as a competitor. So I won't vote on this at the next action. I will look at, you know, the open book policy or cost, cost report that we get in November. I will ask questions. I've done it before with Performance Services. But I think just kind of me professionally, it's hard for me to vote yes or no on this. One thing that, but this, like I said, over all these years, this has been an effective, fair and important tool we've had in our disposal to implement these improvements. One of the things that I really try to prioritize is the consistency of controls. It's an unwritten, under-recognized thing that we've really been able to try to accomplish, all the digital controls. And having one company do that is beneficial. So that's kind of my, kind of where I sit right now. I think there's a lot of value in this. There's things that I don't like about it, but that's kind of my, kind of where I sit with this seat right now. One thing that I would request is we make sure that as PSI prices this and it gets prices for all the individual items, I really want to see three bids for each one. There's some examples that you've provided on here that are some pretty significant dollars that are just one bid, which is another example of a conflict that that company is a friend of mine and I work with them professionally. So that's my request back to the business team is I want PSI to give us three bids for every item. Go ahead. So that's kind of my perspective on where we sit and what my approach is going to be in November. But I think it's been successful for us.
Thank you. Board, any other questions or comments?
I do have a question on in this booklet, these savings, $17,000. What is that a total spend? So 17,000 on a spend of what, just roughly?
These are, these projects are strewn across a bunch of different schools. So I'm sorry, I don't know that answer, but I've.
I'm just curious.
I have a question on the alternative to using this, that sort of many cooks in the kitchen. It seems like one of the benefits of this is outsourcing some of the work. Would staff have the bandwidth to do the management of this process? Or I guess is that an additional savings that should be considered?
Our staff or Performance Services staff?
So if we didn't, if we didn't do this, we would have to manage it.
Actually, we would, if we didn't go through this route, we'd go through a traditional bid route. And we'd have more than likely architect involved, depending on the size of the project. We might have construction management or GC, a general contractor running the program, especially if there's a lot of trades involved as a whole. So it's, we ourselves, we don't have the expertise inside of the school district to manage something like this, which is why either through a traditional bid or through this delivery model, it's achievable because we do have the experts that are running the show. But if for whatever reason this wasn't available at all, this law had never come about, we'd be going through a traditional bid model.
Board, any other questions? I have one. Why would a district not do this? What's the risk in the, there's got to be some risk involved somewhere. I don't understand that side of the equation.
There may be some players that are in this market that are attempting to take any type of project and twist it and turn it into an energy savings project. I've heard examples of, you know, I've heard of roofs before. That's probably a toss-up, but that seems a little more, has a little more validity to it. I've heard, I've heard people mention, hey, we can take care of that parking lot that you're working on and we can somehow prove to you that there's going to be an energy savings. So to me, the pitfall or the potential rabbit hole are things that would be considered off-brand or controversial. That would be, that would be really, really difficult to ascertain what the cost savings would be and then place a guarantee on top of it too.
And then if we're, if we're wrong on picking our projects, well, we just go to the standard market. There's no penalty for that. All right, thank you. All right, on to our third oral report, IASB resolutions report. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so this actually I don't think has to be a super lengthy discussion for tonight. Let me just set quick context. So I think the board knows the context of the resolutions, right? This is an annual process that happens tied to the school board conference where members of your association have an opportunity to bring forward resolutions that they are asking IASB to kind of set in their policy agenda for the year. And there is this delegate process to help determine those priorities. So generally, there's a couple of steps in that resolution process. One, your delegate representative, that's Eric this year, will have an opportunity at an upcoming webinar to learn a little bit more about these resolutions. And so really question one and the main question for tonight is, as you read through them, are there any additional pieces of information that you need prior to being able to ultimately make a decision if you disagree with the committee recommendation on any of these, right? So so really tonight isn't necessarily for you to come to consensus on do you agree or not. It's really just to help Eric understand if there's any additional information you're going to need to be able to kind of weigh in on these or discuss them. Makes sense?
So Board, are there any additional, or Eric, do you want to add anything to that? Being your delegate?
Nothing to add, nothing to add, but I did have a question for you, Dr. Schuler, that might inform the board's opinion on one of these.
Sure.
There's a topic regarding school resource officer incremental funding. If financial constraints were not a concern, would we have a different view on where and how many school resource officers we wanted in the district?
That's a good question. No, I don't think so. So I guess the caveat to that would be that obviously if funding were being given for that purpose and no other purpose, yes, of course, we would likely support that measure. I think as we've had discussion about resource officers at other levels, for us, it's really been a matter of looking at, are there other resource needs that would take a priority over the cost of that resource officer, especially at the middle school? Other mental health resources or supports, be it social work, be it alternate. We've identified those as a priority over the resource officer. Again, not diminishing the importance of them, but that's been our priority.
So Board, do you have any questions or points for Eric that you want to emphasize he asked questions about? All right. Brad?
No, I don't, we're not deciding if we agree or disagree.
No, just anything you want him to follow up on and get more detail on.
As I read through it, the whole thing seemed to make sense. Didn't have any concerns about what they were proposing.
I do have a couple. On the employment history review, I'd like to understand, it says the resolutions committee is saying do not adopt because they felt that this was not the right system to use to fix the issue. And I'd like to understand why. Because it seemed like if we could leverage an existing system, that's not necessarily a bad thing. So I'd like to understand that piece. And then. You know, I, the last one, I just have a question mark on it. So I don't know that it's additional information. I will, I will read it again and then if I have something, I'll just reach out to Eric.
Perfect, yeah, that's great. Because again, it's this, we're just getting information, gathering information, right?
Yeah, and that's like the first three were layups to me, the last two I had questions on.
Yep.
And that will help. So I'm not against what they're saying, but I don't, I'm not in support of it yet either.
All right, great.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else? All right, we have one discussion item tonight. That is the 2023 tax levy, bond and interest fund abatement discussion. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so again, this is really coming to the full board from the finance committee who's spent time at a couple of meetings, I think discussing this item and wanted to bring it forward. So I'll let Dr. O'Keefe just kind of remind you of the context. Again, I do want to make clear, I believe the recommendation of the finance committee in bringing this to you is that we do move forward with the abatement, but we want to make sure you have opportunity to understand that, ask questions and weigh in on it.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Two things specifically in your green folder. So you'll see this one pager that's in there. Again, this just outlines what options legally the board has available to it. I will not go through these in depth. We've talked about them before, but you can abate the levy, which is part of the conversation tonight. You can declare interest earnings and there is a specific process to work through on that side. Or you can issue working bond, working cash bonds that go into working cash, sit out there for a period of time and then you would use. there for a period of time, and then you would use your residual dollar amounts sitting in the debt service fund to pay off those working cash funds. But tonight specifically, we're looking at and talking about the abatement of the levy. So I'll ask you to turn to your big sheet here. We'll bring that up on the board. Thank you. So what's highlighted in yellow specifically pertains to the current levy year that we're in. So we are in levy year 23, and as a reminder, each levy year actually branches over two different fiscal years, just based on how collections occur. So spring collections and fall collections, which means that we're in two different fiscal years. If you move to the far right, can you scroll over just a little bit? Perfect, thank you. So if you look at column AJ, so one of our public comments earlier tonight was, how does this all work? So specifically, we have, we submit a request for the exact dollar amount of the debt that is due over that levy period. The county does add a 1% loss cost on top of that to ensure that school districts and other municipalities, if in fact, 100%, which does not happen, of taxes are paid, that there are still resources available to pay for all the existing debt under the debt service fund. If there were not resources in the debt service fund, you would, as a board of education, be required to pay any of those differences out of the operating funds. So obviously, this is a benefit to us. And, and as mentioned earlier tonight, and one of the public comments, too, exactly, over time, between this 1% and between interest earnings, dollars can add up. Certainly, there were a few periods of years where interest earnings were next to nothing, but that environment has changed over the last year, and we are seeing more significant interest earnings throughout. One point, just for clarity purposes, there is not, at this moment in time, three and a half million dollars available sitting inside the debt service fund. That is what the projected amount will be specific to when you make your last payment, two years from this month, so on October 1st of 2025. So between all of the debt and interest payments that we make between now and then, and then any interest earnings, we anticipate that, that dollar amount will be in the 3.5 million dollar range. What has been discussed and what we're looking at specifically here, that would be part of the recommendation, is if we were going to abate, $2 million amount would be saved for two reasons. One, we have those funds available, sitting in the debt service fund, so it won't have an impact on overall fund balance. We're not going to run out of funds, in essence, and not be able to pay our debt. Two, if you look at that AJ column again, and what's highlighted in yellow will be the extension for this year with the total bonds. If we exceed more than a $2 million abatement, you're actually potentially going to create yourself a lopsided debt service fund payment where you potentially could lower your debt service fund payments for levy year 23 beyond what your 24 levy service or debt service payments would be out of levy fund. So in essence, we've got this nice downward trend over time. You potentially, if we looked at more than $2 million, would upset that, upset, excuse me, upset that a bit. So that's why we're looking at the $2 million amount, because it's a further drop based on what we did in levy year 22, and then a smooth roll into levy year 24 before all of that debt comes off the books.
Board, any questions?
Just a comment I'd like to make. In looking at this in the finance committee, you know, I think one thing important to reflect on is the question we asked at the time we borrowed these funds. So I just want to refresh everybody's memory as to what the referendum question at that time had been. Shall the Board of Education of CUSD 200 acquire and improve a school site and equip new Hubble Middle School and issue bonds to the amount of $58 million for the purpose of paying the costs thereof? So, you know, as, as we talked about it in committee, you know, one element was certainly considering the reason that we have these funds to begin with and the purpose that we stated we would use them for when we borrowed them. The other thing I would add is, you know, since we started discussion of this in committee, we've through a variety of avenues, including the CAC, received feedback on this. It has not been uniform. It has been very divided feedback on should we or should we not abate. So just want to be transparent with the fact that that was a little surprising to us, that we did receive that mixed feedback.
Board, any questions, additional questions?
I'll just, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'll just offer a comment, probably the other side of, of not abating. We are anticipating borrowing funds for the middle school capital improvement projects, or improvement projects. Fiscally responsible, it seems we would not be being fiscally responsible if we returned 3.5 million, only to then just borrow it and have to pay interest on that over several years, many years. If we, if we didn't, if we could take that three and a half million off of what we are going to be borrowing, in the long term, we would save more. Like, that's how I look at it, but I do absolutely appreciate that the referendum question was to build Hubble, and we have completed that and have excess funds. I think we're also talking about like not, the taxpayers not realizing the abatement funds for two years. Is that correct?
No, it would actually be on your tax bills next year. So if you, so if you were to abate this with the 23 levy, it would impact the tax bills that arrived May 1st.
Do we know what the average homeowner would receive back? Like, the average homeowner that we look at when we were talking about the middle school projects and what savings or, or what?
Thinking back to, to what we've been talking about with the, the middle school capital projects, there, there's been some dollars that we've shared with the public, like if the debt just went away completely and there was no issuance of new debt. So these are going to be minimal dollars, like significantly minimal dollars. But just a little bit of perspective, if we were to allow the debt to completely expire, not issue any new debt, so no new debt whatsoever, the average tax savings, based on parameters that have been in place for the last month, but we know that interest rates and, and things change in the markets, for a median home value of $370,400 within our district, would be $441 in a year. That's if all $14 million went away and we didn't issue anything new. So that's $14 million down to $3.5 million, so that's 25% of that.
So it's not a significant amount, whereas in the long term, we could save a considerable chunk in interest if we did not return, to the average homeowner, less than $100?
To the median homeowner, probably somewhere in that area.
That's just kind of my thinking of, of seeing the other side, because I do know that at CAC, it was divided on, like, should we or not? And I think if you're talking about perhaps as a homeowner receiving less than $100 compared to long-term savings, it kind of looks different than here we're giving you back. You know, a Friday night pizza or something.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question on the schedule. This column that has numbers continuing on down, that, that is, that is debt service capacity, correct?
That's debt, yes, debt service extension base. That is your debt service extension base.
But that is not debt that we currently...
Correct. That is your ability by not going through referendum, a referendum, to issue debt.
Yes.
Not to exceed those dollar amounts on an annual basis.
And so in, in the first line that's yellow, where it goes from, you know, the 4.4 goes all the way down, the 4.4, the 2.3, is that just the difference between the, does the $2,555 come off the $4,418?
Yeah.
To get to 2363?
So that's existing in that levy year, that's existing debt service extension.
Okay. And then, you know, I do want to echo, and I recognize and understand what you're saying and don't want to minimize what the interest impact would be. But I do feel from, exactly for the reason Eric stated, that we borrowed the money for a specific purpose and we have borrowing capacity. Now, I know right, right now, interest rates are high. I don't know what our borrowing cost would be. Let's just say it's 8%. That's $160,000 a year. That, that's not insignificant. I just still feel, just personally, or, you know, as, as we've talked through it, I feel like it's the right thing to do and it, to keep it separate from the rest of it. But I understand we have hurdles coming up. We'll be talking about five-year projections and so forth, and so it's a fair question.
I think if we could specifically target the abatement amount to the middle school projects, because when you, when you look at what, like, what would that interest look like over 15, 20 years, however long, where we would be borrowing that three and a half million dollars, it's not an insignificant amount, but that $75 I might be getting back as a homeowner kind of is not as significant as what I would be paying over time eventually.
Yep, just one point of clarity, too. So, you know, you've got your three legal options that you can look at. One of the things that you could do, which is option two, is looking at interest earnings over a period of time. You could declare that, declare those interest earnings as quote-unquote interest earnings. You'd be able to move that money into any fund that you wanted, but that 1% that's sitting out there is not a mechanism that you can just move on your own. So anything that's been collected for the 1% throughout the length of these bonds and the payments that have been made on these bonds cannot just come directly out of the debt service fund because you wish it. You would have to go through mechanism three to do that.
Understand. But in essence, would still be capturing that savings.
You have the ability to do so, you would just have to look at, you could look at two different mechanisms if you wanted to.
Okay.
Or just method three, because that would cover all of it.
I see. Thank you.
Brett?
Yeah, so I totally understand the 1% that the county gives us that we didn't ask for. I understand that. So the recommendation is $2 million abatement?
Yes.
Okay. The, so I guess two, two core questions, timing. When we talk about abating, are we talking about under levying our debt service payment in December, or are we talking about adjusting our request in March?
Actually, the, it's the latter, but twisted a bit. So we would present the levy as a whole, but then you would approve a resolution to abate separate from that. That resolution would go to the county. There is a specific date near the end of January, actually, right near the end of February, that that letter has to be received to be validated by the county, and then they would actually just adjust collections based on that.
So our, our requested debt service levy that we approve in December would still be what it is right now, and then we just would do an abatement letter to the county?
Yeah, a resolution for abatement, and we'll, if in fact we go down that road, we'll show you what both look like, so you can look at what the anticipated changes are between...
We would, we would request enough to pay our debt service payment next year, our existing debt service payment, but then ask for a little less, using the money that we have in the debt service.
Correct.
Fun, okay.
Through a resolution to abate.
Right, that's fine. So, so there's no, there's no impact on our debt service levy. I think that's what you're referring to, dropping and then coming back up.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because if $2 million is the number, then levy year 23 after the abatement turns into $14,469,060, which is just slightly above $14,389. So we still got that smooth trajectory down.
Right, which is what we've designed in our bond restructuring.
Correct.
Second question is, as it relates to option two, do we have any handle on the dollar amount of those interest earnings?
If my memory is serving me correctly, $512,000 for the last five years.
Okay, so that's interest.
But that's just the last five years.
That's not, that's not money the county gave us, that's interest earnings.
Correct.
So that goes to my perspective on the security, right? We've got, there's nothing we could do, in my opinion, funding priority, that was the question. To me, funding security improvements to make our kids, kids safe and feel safe, so they can learn better, is a high priority. So I, on the surface, I feel like number two is, is a good solution because we can potentially, depending on how the grant happens, use the grant or not use the grant, what the other, you know, the, the settlement and the jewel issue possibly is interest earnings. I think we could make a lot of improvements to protect and have our students be safe. I don't think anybody in the community is going to argue with that. Hope not. So that's kind of the two things I'm looking at. I want to understand the timing of the levy, but also feel like understanding the interest earnings could make an important impact for us in our schools.
Yeah, and Brett, thanks for mentioning that. The board still has some time, because at the November regular meeting, we'll bring a tentative tax levy to you and by law, that has to sit out there for 20 days before your final approval. So we will not be asking for final approval of the tax levy until December, and at that point, if in fact we work to consider abatement and move forward with it, there would be a resolution associated with that in the, in the same breath.
So that, that's kind of how I look at it. I understand the questions about the middle schools. I don't want to, personally, I don't want to conflate the issues. That's kind of the way I'm looking at this.
Can I ask a question? The, because he brought up an interesting point. I wasn't thinking of the, breaking any components apart. And so we have a, we have a projected surplus of $3.5 million, which we're recommending we abate $2 million now, and then we have the million and a half that we wait until final calculations because things could change, so that we know what that number is. But the question I have is, can we do both? Can we abate the $2 million and declare interest earnings?
Yes.
For the $500,000?
Whether or not, I'd have to take a peek, whether or not there's the actual cash in debt service to be able to do both at the same time, when looking at future payments and all that, because the majority of our tax payments have come in. So we'll have some trickling payments at the end of this month, at the end of November, at the end of December, but our next major payment won't be until really the end of May. So we just have to do a cash flow analysis to see where we're at.
Yeah, I kind of think we should maybe, maybe talk about that a little bit in, in scope of the, in, in the total, you know, what we're looking at total, what we're talking about now, and, and what are some alternatives?
Yeah, and we can certainly check with legal. I, I don't want to say that we can do this without making sure it's accurate. You very well may be able to declare that, but we just don't do anything until a specific date in the future. So you declare it at some point, and it sits until it's time to actually move that money. But we'll, we'll find that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie?
I have a question that I think is just a clarification, but I just want to make sure I clarify. So the, I appreciate Eric reading the bond question. Is the question really one of expectations and should we exercise discretion to abate, or are we in any way legally restricted with these funds towards that question?
Your legal options are the three legal options in front of you.
Okay.
Any other questions? John?
I would just comment that I think that in terms of transparency and honesty with our taxpayers, that we need to abate that base amount, the $2 million. The rest of it, I think we can work with. I like the idea of using the interest toward improving security. What we need to abate, we need to abate, but I would say no more than that.
Any other questions, feedback? So this is the only discussion item. There's no action, no vote, no nothing. And why, my, I guess my only comment would be I support the work of our finance committee and the recommendation of our finance committee. That's why we have a finance committee, frankly, and that work is important and I appreciate their work, so I support it. And the recommendation.
I want to just add into that, I appreciate the discussion tonight. I mean, a recommendation is just that, the community feedback received via the CAC, via public comment, as well as this discussion tonight, I think will ultimately get us to a better place.
Yeah, great, I appreciate that, Eric. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're into board committee reports. So we're going to ask the chair of each of these committees to do a brief report out. We've had a lot of commentary on finance, but go ahead, finance committee.
Finance first?
Yes. I'm sorry, it says facilities, I apologize.
You looked at him and said...
No, I, you know, I've got a little bit of late night problems going on. Right, so facilities, sorry, Brett, go ahead.
I mean, I'll make it really brief. Most of our agenda covered the topics we discussed in the committee meeting. The only thing that I would add, if you look at the minutes, there was a short conversation kind of about the value of making the improvements at the middle schools, both, both in terms of the student impact, the potential value in things like teacher attraction. There's a little bit of conversation around that, which is a little premature at the board table right now, but we did discuss that at the committee meeting.
Anything else, Brett?
No.
And your partner is John, I believe. And your partner is John, I believe. Other feedback, John, good? All right, finance committee, that's Dave and Eric.
So we'll spend a few minutes talking about the abatement. I'm just kidding. The, we did spend a lot of the committee time talking about that. I'll go very quickly on my other bullet points. So we have quite a bit to review in the next several months with this bond abatement, the levy, financial audit and the five-year forecast, which we plan on as a committee getting a little bit more into the details than we have in the past, given what's going on with the teacher contract and so forth. Just talking about options with the all-day kindergarten fees and other options and other fees. Looking at how those fees index versus our comparable districts. And you know, there is a TIF three surplus likely to be distributed. And so we're, we talked about how we should treat those, what fund that should go into. And that's it. Dr. Schuler talked about the accounting codes being added to the check register. And we also reviewed the parameters of the P card, the purchasing credit cards that certain people have, the procedures and agreements and that people have to sign when they, when they do that. So that's it.
Great, thank you.
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
Last piece, I know we've received some communication and heard about it tonight. I think that the stuff we've heard about and read about are kind of narrowly focused on one particular topic. I think the bigger issue is what you referred to in terms of the procurement card and the checks and balances and the accountability we have for that. I think that's something that's probably more pertinent is to make sure we understand that. Is it administrative procedure, maybe not administrative procedure, but administratively, we have the right controls over that procurement card. I know a lot of school, all school districts have it. I just want to.
And that, that's what they say, and that's what we went through with the finance committee.
So is that, so we're, we're good with the mechanisms, we have the barriers, the approvals, all that stuff?
Yeah, I, I believe so. I mean, you know, there, there, you know, there was, I'll just be really open about it. There was one thing about somebody buying a cup of coffee that they shouldn't have. I didn't, I didn't dig into that specific thing. But by and large, you know, I understand the concerns. But you know, buying food for employees occasionally, I think is, is serves a public purpose, so. You know, but so what people are doing, you know, there's, it's coming out of the budget. There, there are controls around it. People can't abuse the cards. If they abuse the cards, there are repercussions.
That's what I'm mostly concerned about.
Can I just add a comment about that? Because we've had some communication about the buying food for staff, that kind of thing. I think we definitely as overseeing our budget, there's value in, and I am sure you agree with me, there's, there's value in valuing relationships. You know, the costs that we would incur by employees not being happy and leaving. And you can't really place a price on that for a student, you know, to have staff turnover, you know, that kind of thing. So I think, if I actually look at it, I'm sure I will get email about this, that those costs seem to be somewhat in check. Like I wasn't alarmed by them. Things that we pay for, for administration to interact with our community, we gain so much from our community that there's value in those relationships. So we also want staff to work at our schools. We want a happy place. I think it's minimal what we've spent. And I have clearly gone over some of those check registers and actually have a theory about the cup of coffee and I'm not concerned about it, so. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those comments.
Eric?
Yeah, I think the key is, I mean, we can, and I mean, obviously people will have a debate about was a dollar spent on this or that, value added. The key thing though is there are controls around it, there's transparency. So you know, there's, there's not rogue spending going on that no one has visibility or controls around.
Anyway, Julie?
Oh, I was just going to jump in there.
Oh, you're jumping ahead, all right. Let's go to the human resources, HR policy committee, Julie and Angela.
All right, so the minister did a good job of reflecting our discussion, so I'm just going to keep this brief. We've been going through and reviewing the administrative procedures that align with our policy. So we did sections one through three at our first meeting, which was school disorganization, board of ed, general school administration. Next is section seven on students. Uniform grievance form, we have an online form now. We added the questions that Brad suggested and that's up. We also discussed board policy five point one two zero, which has to do with employee ethics and code of conduct. So one of the things that we talked about, what there was, Dr. Schuler and Mr. Biskin are taking some training we have on boundaries and texting and memorializing. And we also suggested getting input from CAC on that policy and also, you know, possibly our student ambassadors. And that's really all the highlights.
All right, any questions, board? All right, thank you. Any other reports from board members?
Brad has one.
So Angela and Dr. Schuler and two of our assistant principals met a few weeks ago to kind of kick off the high school ambassador program. I've completed, so we decided that Angela was going to go to South and I was going to go to North since our kids went. We wanted to be free of any kind of relationships or familiarity. Unbelievable experience. We finished North last week. I know you have finished South Friday. Super excited about this. Kids are great. I think it's going to be an awesome program. The one thing that I did hear consistently is, well, what do I have to do?
Yep.
So we have awesome kids.
Yeah.
I know we're seeing like a, a segment of them, but I can't even picture myself in that position when I was in high school, so. Super impressed, super impressed and it was a great process. We had some very hard questions. We found some of those hard questions, we have four, four questions, very hard.
I'm trying to remember who came up with number three, because we had a difficult time deciphering the question each time we asked it to the student. And yet the students came up with their version and it was amazing. I don't think there are enough adjectives to describe the students that we've encountered. And I'm only halfway through, but South did have a couple more. These young individuals are absolutely amazing. And they were the classes who started high school online or virtually, or our eighth graders finishing up middle school virtually. And there is such a variety of kids, such a variety. So it was really neat, very fun.
The next steps are, we are going to, North, we're going to shorten, narrow it down to two seniors and two juniors. You're going to do the same thing as South.
I don't know how that's going to happen, but.
And then we're going to come together as a full group for our final round of interviews with the final eight on November first.
And I'm going to add one thing. I think we will enjoy the excitement and positivity that every single one of them is. That's why narrowing it down is going to be so impossible. But every single interview, I mean, like you said, at that age, I would have been nervous. They were so excited and you know, what do you want to share with the board? And you know, you were thinking, I was thinking we were going to get like a lot of complaints and grievances and stuff. And it's like, our experience is great and we want to share this, it was amazing. So we will have some positivity brought to our table.
Any comments from board members?
Well, just given the, the amazing candidates, I have heard rumblings that administrators or principals are going to be looking for opportunities to engage some others potentially in some other ways, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, I think both, Mr. Campos and Mr. Quintoy are, I'm so impressed with the candidates have come forward. I think they're exploring some ways that they can utilize their expertise, almost like a, like a principal ambassador program to keep the students active and engaged. They don't want to lose any of them.
That's great. Dave?
Just a comment, kind of coupling that with the group of amazing students we saw tonight.
Yeah.
You know, one of the comments I made, do we, do we have similar programs like this at other elementary schools? And you know, I mean, I love the individuality of each school, but that's like, seems like a best practice. And you know, those may be some of the kids we're interviewing in seven or eight years or whenever it is they become juniors and seniors.
One of the, the final question was, can you talk about an elementary or experience you had in elementary or middle school that kind of you've been able to apply? And a lot of kids would reflect back on a particular teacher in elementary school and experience they had. And so Mr. Venkus and I, when we were going through, we would encourage the student to reach out to that teacher.
Oh, yeah.
And kind of make that comment back to the teacher. It was, it was great. We're going to have a great time, they're going to be fun, bring energy and, and an important voice, which we don't have at this stage.
True. I appreciate you guys taking your time to do that on behalf of the board. That's additional time above and beyond, so thank you. Oh, Julie, you want to, sorry?
Just a quick board report. So in this section, we used to share visits to our adopted schools. And I know we are running really late, so I'll talk fast. But I had a chance to visit North and then the transition center. And I just really wanted to be sure to talk about those visits today, because so many times we talk about the hard stuff here and the difficult stuff and the problems. And just being in those buildings, like you saw the portrait of a graduate, you know, living and breathing. Like I saw the collaboration of the students. And it was just so inspiring to be in those buildings and just see so much good that was coming from the teachers and the students. And so I just wanted to be sure to make sure in the midst of all the hard, to acknowledge the really, really good stuff.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. Dave, just also echoing what you said about the, the student leaders tonight, that was awesome, right? We're just fantastic to see. And so I thought, I had the same thought, right? That these are the folks we're going to see how many years from now, right? I just, it's, it's, it's the happy part of this gig. It's awesome, so thank you for bringing that up. Topics for, sorry, we have five written reports. Make sure we go back and plow through those off the agenda, online agenda. So we have our monthly financial reports, our FOIA report, our board communication log, the citizens advisory committee report, and the vision twenty twenty-six professional learning work plan for twenty-three twenty-four. So those are located on the agenda and open to the public. Topics for future discussion, we have three topics right now for future discussion. The twenty twenty-three tax levy, school and district state report cards, middle school facilities and community engagement report. Or any topics you want to be considered for future discussion. All right, hearing on our next regular meeting is going to be on November eighth at seven at Bauer Elementary School. The next committee of the whole meeting will be on October twenty-fifth at seven o'clock at the school service center.
Hey, Rob.
Yes.
Just want to remind the board I will not be at the October twenty-fifth meeting. I'm out of town on business.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. Okay, so remember, we had one item pulled out of our consent agenda for an action. And then we, that is going to be, requires some closed session conversations. So what we're going to do is we're going to adjourn to closed session. We're going to come, have that discussion. We're going to come back out to public, vote on that topic, then go back to closed session because that will allow us to have that vote recorded and videotaped. So we're going to leave that, that going while we go discuss this briefly and then come back, okay? So we're going in, we're going to come back, we're going to go back to closed session after that. So we will be, I have to read this actually. So we're moving to closed session. So board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Opens Meeting Act exemption, five ILCS one twenty slash two, part C, part one, and five ILCS one twenty slash two, part C, part eleven.
So motioned.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Hutch, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, so now we're going to go to closed session, have discussion, we're going to come back, all right?
Yes.
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 Yes. So now we're gonna go to closed session, have discussion, we're gonna come back, all right?